A full order this October tenth meeting of the Bloomington. City Council Climate and Resilience Meeting. Let's just introduce ourselves, I'm David Olive District Four and we're on this chair right now.
Isabel Heaton Smith District Five.
Matt Clary at L R G.
And I'm Ash Kurela and council staff.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, we're going to continue our discussion tonight, which has been the topic this year phasing out gas powered lawn equipment. And I think maybe the first thing we should do. Isabel had a really good framework for us to look at, can we put that back up? Because it kind of gives good context that we'll consider. Thank you Isabel for putting that together. Okay. And and maybe I should mention for people watching. You know, our considerations are, you know, because of this group of CO2 emissions. But we've been asked by the public to also consider other buildings. So, you know, we have inefficient two-stroke powered. Engines that produce high levels of hydrocarbons VOCs and. You know, that's a consideration in terms of public health and then we have a noise pollution considerations as well. That is sort of part of this whole whole package. Okay, so, so the considerations that Isabel put together were essentially what equipment are we considering? Do we want to prohibit the use of the equipment or any restricted use? The temporal nature of it should be restricted certain days and holidays and so forth. And in terms of regulations, maybe I could just. I talked to Stephen Lucas about this, you know, where does it fit? It depends on the substance, really, depending on what we come with it, where it fits, so, you know. It may, it may. You know, it all is a whole new chapter in the city. But we need to sort of, maybe today we can talk about. You know, what we would like to see in our draft ordinance. If we want to go forward with one, in that way we can think about where it fits. And then in terms of regulating to be a force that's up the administration, and I think once we have a draft ordinance. The administration see who we enforce it. Clearly, if it's all hours, it's going to be police, if it's during daytime, it might be a different, you know, department. And then what should the phase in period be? And I think with last time we were also talking about whether the city could offset, you know, the cost. And and that was a consideration too, so.
Yeah, I had two other points that I added during the meeting last time.
Okay.
One was the educational outreach component, how will we spread the word about any rules?
Okay.
And number eight I had, how will we mitigate impacts on low income communities and small business owners?
Good, yeah. So, so maybe we can just keep that very in mind as we proceed. But before we get started in discussion about this, maybe we should review a little bit about what the findings were last. Sean from the. From E S D had a document that she shared about her findings with the. MCCSC and the I U. Could we put that up and just kind of review that, if everybody's seen this information, it's generally positive. So. This is I U P Y, I'm seeing this supporting transition.
I was very curious about I U B there. Weed blowers don't perform well on the fall.
Yeah.
What?
I know, it's just a good one.
Is it because of weather and fall?
September, I think it's the the total load, the volume. It's the power of of electric blowers that are available are not especially well up to the task of the volume of fall leaves.
Okay.
So better, better progress the things or lower volumes of leaves and the other things they use them for. And and they have struggled and actually through gas equipment and fall. Very heavy into leaf season.
Well, that's too bad because I'm I'm particularly concerned about leaf blowers because it sort of fits into the other considerations of the. Noise, but. So anyway, the cycle time is every seven years for them. They lease it three to five years, so don't worry about maintenance. Their inventorying right now. Who wants the next one? It's jumping around, many people like their grass crews are switching to better. So they don't have. They don't have indoor ground quality products, so they did.
So I'm a little confused. If we can back up just a couple, so. Are the first three items about I U P Y because C, on item C, it says they replace gas powered lawnmowers every seven years. And item D specifies I U B and they lease their equipment.
It's I U Y buys their equipment or has father of them in Bloomington is releasing it.
Of course, we're really only concerned with I U B.
Yeah.
Most concerned with I U B.
Yeah.
Okay, so they have the leases, so that should make the transitional release.
So, so Matt, you know one thing we do about this, can we consider this as one entity while we're reading right now? Does it apply I U B?
Her experience is informed primarily by her long, long-term role at I U P Y. So all of the sort of experience she relates here about. Grass crews actual use and what they've been able to to do, that's all I U P Y specific. The I U B known item D is is obviously about I U B. She's in charge with, or sorry, she's in charge of and tasked with sustainability for the whole campus system. But they are also working to hire a Bloomington-specific sustainability lead now, I think that position is posted. So we'll have maybe a more direct counterpart in Bloomington and then three to six month timeframe. But but yeah, I think I think this, this is mainly like just what what the experiences look like on the I U P Y side, which can probably at least help inform the the Bloomington side. So, yeah.
Okay. Isabel, does that satisfy your?
Yes.
Question?
So A through C, it sounds like it's talking about I U P Y and then when it specifies I U B, almost that's.
Yeah, so they, so they talked, you know, say, it seems like they're switching to better power. There are limitations, says that they can't not use it for snow removal. Let's, let's, let's scroll down, she suggested some should be better ways to decrease battery powered lawn equipment from the ban. Okay, and then let's go.
So, I'd be curious in what context she meant that, item H. We can't make I U do anything, I don't think, so is she talking about? The general public?
Is that right? I mean, I know, I know I U is often not subject to Bloomington laws, like for instance with zoning and things. But I I'm not sure that, do we know that? If we.
I I assumed.
I would assume they would be subject to a a ban if we implemented, you don't think so?
No, I think they have wide limits in terms of their own, being their own entity. I don't think there's anything that we can.
They do in some areas, but not uniformly so, I mean, they're still subject.
I'll find out.
Yeah, this is important.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. I think the the incentives piece might be, and I mean, so we really talked at length about. You know, what what the barriers are and what the time, anytime you start talking about early replacement of equipment, you're going to start to run into like. The the easiest thing to do that might be facing least resistance is getting on like, what is the replacement time cycle for? Commercial entities and I U and basically saying, okay, like. Your newest equipment you just bought, that's the last gas power piece of equipment you're going to buy, everything that you replace between now, you know, going forwards to be electric. Basically trying to create that, so maybe that's a seven-year time, I mean, longer timelines than of course, you know, seven-year timeline for flower, maybe even longer for mowers. Mowers, I know commercially like is just a struggle still, like the the like to act like buying equipment, just overall supply chains. But she did say, and this is where I wonder if the incentives comment is coming from this, she noted that. In comparing like operation to maintenance costs for an electric mower versus diesel mowers, like the O N M is basically not existent for electric. It's just incredibly efficient.
Yeah.
And very high for their diesel equipment in terms of their ongoing fuel costs and maintenance costs. And so the savings, the O N M savings paid for their mower, you know, over time. That they purchased in twenty seventeen, obviously that's subject to fuel costs and other dynamics, you know, but. It it's like like a lot of things in the electrification world, including. Electric vehicles and other things, like it's a higher upfront cost, but lower operating costs over time, as the question is how, at some level. How to help folks overcome those higher upfront costs, right? And so maybe that's where the incentives. Thing is coming from, that if if the. Electric mower is, but that's, I mean, quite a quite a big resource out there if we're talking about. Maybe on city operations, I mean, we're already making that choice as a city, we're paying a premium for electric mowers when we make the. Equipment replacement decision now, you know. And I just recently in building trade park, incidentally, we saw a crew with battery-powered backpack blowers, which is great to see.
And was it working?
Yeah, they were blowing clippings around, but yeah. Or other other degree, but. Yeah, yeah.
So this is a good, good perspective though from Jessica for sure. Those are really good points to make, because you know, there's a lot of respect, because in this we have to consider, and one is, and and. Trying to put up to some information about cost. Of equipment to further on, and that's another consideration, you know, what is the sunk cost that they're they're having to. Maybe we should just pursue the churn, then then we can talk at that, various considerations. MCCSC looks like they're transitioning to putting a plan in place. They're aware of the harmful effects. They've recently ordered some equipment zero. Meaning like zero turn mowers. And they also replaced the golf carts electric. They have extensive phase out planning place, so, so there are. So that that's, that's wonderful. Then we have three lawnmower companies, which is much greater than we've died by.
So wait, for MCCSC, I think it would be essential to find out. What the phase out plan is, right? If it's within, if it's twenty years, then that does not.
Oh, yes.
Jive.
Yeah.
Right.
I guess we'll keep.
I guess that, I mean, yeah, this is critical, and that one on I U as well, I tried to ask just for the same basic question. And they just released a plan of action plan, you know, for the university system, which has a twenty forty net zero commitment. Which is pretty ambitious for what, probably what they're able to control. So that that was a very short answer, about twenty forty. And I think she backed out from that and basically said, so we wouldn't already purchasing any gas powered blowers, you know, any later than twenty thirty-three, for instance, or twenty thirty-two. But that, that was just, just some simple like, we've committed to twenty forty, so I can say that, but like, we're not. I guess my, my point in bringing that in fact, at the MCCSC plan as well, is that. We know that there are risks to. Passing something, we also know there are myriad challenges with enforcement. And my general feeling along still has been that we might achieve the most in terms of impact. If we can get start by getting a strong collective commitment, it would be more ambitious than otherwise set. From MCCSC, I U, City of Bloomington, and ideally Monroe County would be great too, you know, and then if we can. I know it's not as ambitious as some folks like, but let's say hypothetically, you know, fully phase out all two-stroke engines by. Twenty twenty-eight or twenty thirty and all mowers by twenty thirty-five. Like, and actually have commitments for everybody, then that's accelerated from what their current commitments are, like. That's moving the needle in a significant way, I think, and like. Is maybe more likely to have impact than saying no gas power equipment by twenty twenty-five, full stop, right? But I I just don't, I'm very wary of not just cramming the risks, but also the. Sort of symbolic act essentially that like isn't actually achievable and will just be fraught by competition.
Which is that it's going to be a delicate balance. You know, what? What's, what's truly feasible, I mean, if they push themselves. Versus what's comfortable.
Well, the real difficulties are the residents. So.
That's it, yeah.
You know, and there was, we discussed that last time in terms of the impact and notification, education. And then helping those who, you know. You know, a couple hundred dollars for a mower is a big, big investment for me because it will move the people, so probably can help.
I think transition, like directing the development of a trade-in program or something like that, some of this is going to be see the scope of what we can do legislatively, but I think. Identifying the key features and talk about as, as we approach. Like a, a, either a phase-out timeline or a hard date timeline. Community scale that stop develop not just educational resources, but financial support resources, right?
Yeah.
So trade-ins might be an option for that. One other thing I did want to bring up, which is related, is that Jessica mentioned. Duke Energy has a fleet plus equipment assistance program that their. I U is, at least I U P Y is working actively with Duke on. And so I wonder if.
Sorry, what type program?
It's, so Duke has like a fleet, like vehicle fleet transition program, but it's actually fleet plus equipment, so it's it's off-road equipment as well. And they'll assist, they're assisting I U and presumably code or road assist, you know, City of Bloomington or other, or MCCSC or other large institution like these. Customers are theirs. In a transition plan for their equipment, so they do a lot of like. Here they, they have the specific models of like all the different options that are available to you in a certain vehicle class or certain equipment class. What the cost estimates are, what the operation and maintenance, you know, compare, so basically doing all the like detail scoping out, like here's your. Here's your current like equipment, here are your replacement options. And and have done a lot of that work to actually assist. You know, folks in in making that transition, so it's something for, I don't know, Jessica talked about that with Sean at all, but it's something for us to. With a little more closely after the city transition or possibly some of our institutional, you know, collaborators or partners.
Okay, wow, that would be wonderful. Okay.
I wanted to mention. Since we're talking about education, especially to the residential sector. I mean, lawns are not a sustainable. Land use, so. I don't, yeah, I I I feel a little bit. Hesitant to support anybody buying lawnmowers at all because that's not. The ideal way to use one's land. So, I mean, I know that that's a huge cultural shift. But I think it's something we need to talk about. As part of the education that goes along with any restrictions. Like, oh, you can save a lot of money if you just, you know, grow prairie grass or whatever.
Maybe, it's, it's a, we have this kind of both hand thing in a lot of contexts, right? Like, I'd rather everybody walk bike and take transit than buy electric vehicles, but the reality is we got to be both. And we got to shift, mode shift as much as possible while also supporting transition to E Vs. And, you know, composting is similar, right, that we ideally want everybody to compost on site at their home, but like. A citywide composting program might be necessary too. And and so I absolutely agree and support like. Maybe a level of educational resources to try to push people towards a living lawn approaches. And consider that option, but. I think currently it's not, it, we should, doesn't mean we should exclude the the transitional electric equipment also, right?
So I just didn't want to forget.
No, 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 I'm with you.
I think that's, that's another record. Yeah, I mean, having farmed, we use lawnmowers and, you know, weed workers as. You know, to suppress weeds or crops, so if people are gardening, they may need to use these sorts of things just to. You know, keeps, keep the, keep the weeds there, you know, go around your, your crops, so. But I I'm in total agreement with you, I mean, you know, there's more, I think there's more lawn grass than broccoli in the US, right?
Especially within the city of Bloom.
Yeah. Okay, can we move on to the MCCSC part, okay, there's a large number of. Companies, thirty-eight, almost forty of them, and then there's information related to, let's see. Okay, so we have information about the, the income. So we have an idea of those who might be affected, the number.
Those who might get subsidy.
Subsidy, yeah, yeah. Important information, by the way. Ash is serving as, you're you're taking minutes, my name too, as well is. Okay, so you've got a lot on the plate, so if we go too fast. So, average cost of mowers and other equipment, this is really interesting. To have. So it's part of the consideration in terms of how to phase in.
But we should also consider life cycle costs like that.
Yeah, yeah, I'll also mention, I mean, again here, Duke Energy can and should be an active. And supportive partner, they absolutely should support the transition to electric equipment. And, you know, if they don't have rebates available, like maybe we can work with them to have, make rebates available. So at some point, a meeting with their governmental relations person to figure out what that conversation looks like would be, would be helpful. We would, seems pretty active, they email us, I assume you all get those emails too. That's good, her name, okay.
That's Irwin.
Yeah, it was very good.
So we should flag Sean to have a meeting and see what can be argued for the city. Same considerations, you know, I U was enjoying.
So yeah, both the, both the Duke, like fleet transition, fleet and equipment assistance program, but then also. It's faring costly for rebates to help support a transition of of gas powered equipment to electric for residents and businesses.
Yeah, that would be huge.
And ultimately, that is a leading function to do as well, I mean, like we may need to provide, again, a trade-in rebate or. You know, some other kind of assistance to help with some of that upfront cost barrier.
Does the Inflation Reduction Act have anything in it for? This kind of electrification?
That's something I'm aware of. It's not say it doesn't.
So I was just doing a little research on in terms of what gas powered equipment consists of in cities, in the EPA as a analysis of. That mowers consisted of about forty percent of the emissions. Nine percent weed blowers, seven percent chainsaws, eighteen percent trimmers. Six percent snowbore, so it's, it was a sense of impact and you can pass that on to you, but we just found it today.
String trimmers or like hedge trimmers, whichever, all of it?
Uh, just of terms, eighteen percent for trimmers.
So it was something that Jessica noted, and I mean, affairs that the hedge trimmers and string trimmers staff have been very ample, no problems.
Yeah.
The blowers are very, they've struggled a little bit in the fall.
Well, and I was going to, you know, ask you or just put this out there, then in terms of, some of the consideration is about power, right? How much, how much work do you get out of the device?
Yeah.
And can it be transitioned to electric or is electric not feasible? And it seems to me mowers are sort of, maybe they're in a way, but.
Yeah.
Things like large equipment, like bushhogs and or tractors, quite there. Obviously, things like trimmers are, we can phase those out right away.
Yeah.
I mean, I would like to, you know, so we should be thinking about these, maybe phasing out these equipment in just a bunch of way.
Yeah.
Related to their cost, because trimmers are low cost, plus they're feasible to get electric one now, they can work just as well. And then, you know, mowers maybe a bit later, et cetera, you know, so maybe have a. So that's another consideration.
Related, I I kind of like, if you're all around February, I knew about some of the lawnmower companies, like. There were some particular uses that that. Were interesting that I was unaware of, like use of blowers in particular, and we're calling. Some of, so. Like the, just not traditional uses, you know, and and and. I wonder if on the, some level of like exceptions, you know, that can be granted essentially by, by staff, if it, or by some entity. If the case can be presented, you know, strongly enough.
Well, give an exception.
I'm trying to find, yeah, what the. Maybe there was something about electric chainsaws and then the biggest bar they can find is twenty inches, and like there's some applications of electric chainsaws that are used by, posted like.
I found the same thing, but chainsaws, you just, if you're going to take them to victory, just.
One, one we brought up. Power washing, maybe the power application isn't there yet with electric equipment. And so that was another instance.
Power washers or gas count?
Yeah, some are.
So who, who knows, I mean, I think everything we heard at that meeting was, you know, some level of green assault, I. Come from a bigger perspective, right, because that is maybe, this is the easiest way to do things, so that's the way they want to do it and represent it in a certain light.
Wait, you're reporting from which meeting then?
The government meeting with.
Oh.
Lawn gear companies, and I mean, everything we heard there, like. We should be aware of the motivations of, of, you know, of what's in, of what's in the interest of the folks we heard from. But at the same time, what I'm highlighting here is that like, there were, like, I I feel like there will probably need to be some level of, of. Review of of extenuating circumstances essentially, or like, you know, like narrow use cases, which were a lot of sections for. So just noting that as something that they might want to include in in ordinance.
Yeah. So maybe some appeal.
Sure.
Okay. We don't have to review this in detail, but just, you know, it's, that's a graph on what one might expect and it's good information. But it seems to me that gas powered leaf blowers. Are, you know, could be phased out at one point, quite soon. Which would also attend to the problem of noise. I mean, not only the pollution aspect, but also the noise, because. What, from what I've been reading, it's like a tenfold difference in sound in terms of decimal level. It's like sixty-five to seventy or something for electric. And the gas power is like eighty to ninety. Now, Hugh Kramer, he said it's a particular frequency of sound too, that's pretty annoying. But I think just in terms of, and you know, the decimal level is is longer than that. So the difference between seventy and eighty is a tenfold difference, and you know, it's ten times the amount. So I see. Weed blowers being particularly, I mean, something we could focus. Nowwithstanding what we heard from, I guess, I U P Y about. Then in certain circumstances, they need them for heavy leaves or something, but. I don't know, I use it great, and I know it's not feasible for large.
They used to do it that way.
And. I don't know, any mulch done with electric mowers or something too, I mean, that's another.
What's that? They do it frequently enough, probably.
Yeah. So that might be something we could really focus on is, because that was. You know, kind of brought this to our attention, obviously, the weed blower question, both the sound pollution and also CO2 emissions, even though it's about nine percent of the total. For municipalities, but. Okay, is that, is that everything that she provided or is it not? That's it, right?
Yeah, and there's the list.
Right.
Of all the companies.
Okay, good, that's great. It's a lot of work. Now, Ash, you have some information that we should put on the table, just so we can quickly review it.
At the last meeting, I think you all requested additional research from council staff about other municipalities. And what they did, so we're together in this active information, and there's a, a list from a year ago. That was updated specifically with the four focus cities in mind. Glendale, online, Brookline, Massachusetts, Princeton, New Jersey, and I think the last one is City of White Plains in Newark. All of them focus on the issue of nuisance and some of them specifically make it a precaution noise. A lot of them are housed in the nuisance. Area of their code.
And this is for gas pow- powered leaf blowers?
Yes, yeah.
In every case, or is it every, it, it does on this, I haven't went through your table yet, does it have other equipment?
Some of the other cities, there's a list of, of many, many, many cities, but the ones that, uh, uh, I believe Adam and Simon. Uh, the other intern worked on, um, they followed up with these four in particular. Um, and got additional interview information from them, uh, so. I think some other cities do combustion engine leaf blowers, two cycle, gas power, a lot of, a lot of. Um, as the main target, I think some of them are also all on equipment. Yeah, leaf blowers, lawn blowers, other wood riding, agriculture, mangefast, meetings, equipment, um, those kinds of things, but. These four focus cities, um, most of them have a seasonal limitation, so you can use. And, and it varies depending on the order, but some of them have limitations on both. Um, gas and electric, uh, for noise, um, some of them have, uh, limitations as to you can only use it. March through May and September through December, but if you have electric, you're exempt from that, um. So, uh, most of them have the seasonal, uh, limitations and then also time of day, eight AM to eight PM or eight AM to six PM. Um, something, something along those lines, uh, the enforcement, uh, really all depended on, uh, each different city and needs. So some of them used, I think. Let it go on, I use community service officers, which I think is kind of like, uh, the resource officers that someone mentioned the last meeting. Um, I think in the Brooklyn, Massachusetts, they, uh, it was enforced by the Department of Public Works. Um, in Princeton, New Jersey, they focus mostly on warnings and education and less on enforcement with citations and fines. Um, I believe there was a contact, um, that staff, uh, reached out to, um. Sustainable Princeton was a five oh and C three that did most of the legwork for that. Legislation in New Jersey and they gave us some good contact information if we wanted to reach out to them and ask for, for more, um, if that was of interest to me. So, let's see, and I think a few others, um. When it comes to exceptions, some of them had exceptions for like a bona fide emergency, so I think someone mentioned, um. Like a tree down in the middle of the road from a, uh, an emergency situation, and you needed to use something gas powered for that, um. When it comes to phased out timelines, I think there was one city, Glendale, Illinois, that had. An initial, uh, ban by March of twenty twenty four, and then they determined that was too aggressive given the lag in technological developments. Um, for electric or, uh, leaf blow capacity, uh, compared to gas powered, I think there are work issues with. Batteries not being charged long enough, um, those kinds of things, so, uh, there's a lot of information here, um, but.
I'm just curious, did they bump it forward or did they just?
No.
Retract the.
I think it just, yeah, the interview with, with the staff liaison said that the, the twenty twenty four date was too aggressive.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I don't, I don't know how far back they pushed it, but it seemed like it was, it was too quick for how fast they passed it.
So when did they pass it? What's the? The interval they tried to use? That was then too aggressive?
That is information, man. But that was. I need to double check the exact dates.
Okay, well, I mean, we should just, um. This is, this is great information, did, did you have more to add, Ash?
Um, oh, so I believe it was twenty twenty one, the plan was presented, you know, co work twenty twenty one. And they were, they were supportive of the idea. And they were recommending a complete revision by March of twenty twenty four, so I believe that's three years. That's, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Is it all information enough, um, it's very, I think the one thing I, I really want to know is kind of, um. What, uh, you all want council staff to work on after this meeting and, and, um. You know, how you want us to kind of, uh. Work with, um. If, if you want us to have, uh, twenty persons work with us, E S D and legal and drafting ordinance and bringing it back to you all. Um, you know, what exactly you'd like to have us, uh, do, um, moving forward.
Yeah, um. Is it too soon to talk about? What an ordinance might look like?
No, I don't want that.
Um, so there are different considerations of an ordinance, one would be. The type of equipment. Another, in, you know, so. For instance, I, I think that. Um, personal, personal generator should be exactly. I think they're generally used in times of emergency. And, you know, if you need it, well, you can run it, right? Like keep your lights on, keep your fridge working, whatever. Um, chainsaws, as we've mentioned, you know, it's just the power isn't there to take down a large tree. I think that leaf blowers are, are sort of top of my agenda, uh, for various reasons. Followed by. Trimmers, which I think are feasible. And then mowers. Um, with a certain allowance of time to phase, uh, and then. And then, that really covers most things, I mean, there are other things that we could talk about, but. They may be rarely used, you know, like rototillers or something, I mean, I don't know if it's really, that's consequential for us. Power washers, I don't know if that's really consequential and it's pretty.
Right.
They're used, but not on a regular basis necessarily, so. Those are the ones that are within my sights. And then. And then I, I wanted also to talk about the temporal use. You know, restricting use to as a potential. Ordinance. Um, that was, that is, and for instance, you know, as Ash said, you know, they, they put different. Timelines on use, and I think that. You know, what we heard from the, um. Lawn care companies is that. They don't really care about the weekends, there were be nine to five on, on weekdays, so if we allow nine to five. Um, that's likely to matter to them, um, in the near term. Um, if we restrict it on Saturday, for instance, from ten to four. That gives residents a chance to use their equipment. Um, but Sundays, we could, we could say no use on Sundays. And try that as a quiet, as a, as a means of establishing some peace and quiet for the community. On a single day, we. I'm just putting this out there as, as a proposition, I don't know. How you feel about it, or, you know, just putting it out, so. Um, Isabel, you brought, brought up, you know. It, it, it's true that a two stroke engine is much worse than four stroke engine. It's like five times worse to have a two stroke than a four stroke. But, you know, we're getting into the weeds there in terms of like, how do you possibly enforce that?
Well, it's sort of by equipment type, right, so most mowers are four stroke, most blowers in terms of two stroke, and like that's. So it, I think we get at it by regulating by equipment type.
Okay.
And, and I think that could be, I think that's part of the motivation.
There are blowers that are used.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, but. I, I, again, I think, I, I think we should just probably obviate that and just focus on equipment type. Uh, what we're gonna, what we're going to, you know, propose. Phasing out and how soon. And then, uh, and then the temporal.
What about seasonal time restrictions as opposed to the weekly approach? Or both?
Or both, yeah.
Like I wonder about specifically, um, like let's say we have a. Four year phase out timeline for gas blowers and trimmers, uh. But starting in a year from now, we restrict gas blowers to. October, November only.
Yeah.
Right, and so then if you're like, if you're using for trimmings and all the rest, you're gonna start to, it's kind of like a state of sorts, it starts to. Incentivize the push to electric before it's mandated, right, so that, that sort of interplay of like some, using some time restrictions strategically. As like part of the phasing timeline towards a, a complete ban.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I mean, the difficulty, of course, is gonna be, you know, where the rubber gets thrown as enforced, and it's gonna be completely driven. Right, so somebody's gonna say, uh, they're using a leaf blower. In whatever, April. And they're blowing grass off the sidewalk, this is not allowed, I wouldn't make a complaint. Um, could be over by the time police officer arrives, I don't know, but, I mean, there is, I mean, there are communities that have. Both on the books, but they don't enforce it. Um, I suppose it has some effect, maybe just in terms of communication, but I'd like this, this to be enforced, somebody to get a response. You know, if we restrict it on Sundays and somebody's running it and you've got a. But, you've got a party outdoors and somebody's running the leaf blower, you expect them not to have any noise in Sunday, I don't know.
Except for noise from that part of. Well, I want to back up a moment, so when we talk about trimmers, are we talking only about spring trimmers or also the hedge trimmers that have the inner locking teeth?
Probably both, I think both, and probably extinguishing them, yeah, yeah.
And I wanted to ask. Was there a particular reason that these four municipalities were selected for more in-depth? Um, study, because it seems like. None of them banned. Gas powered.
Right, I think, um. There, there were a lot of these to.
Or the one that did reverse themselves.
Yeah, I think, I think there were lots of these to choose from, and I think they, they focused on, um, the ones that. Might have been most similar, um, to city bouquets and, um, or had, uh, more. Their bans or restrictions, uh, were more recent, um, I think. It also depended on whether the, the folks at that municipality, uh, picked up the phone and answered them, were able to give more in-depth information. Um, I think when it comes to. Seasonal and temporal, uh, limitations, a lot of these cities have done things like. Be, I think the perfect example, I've read in a bunch of ordinance, is something similar to this structure of, from. March to May and from October to December, you can use them from eight AM to eight PM, Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM Saturday. Not on Sunday, not on holidays, and then from. May to September and from December through March, can't use it at all. Um, and then other, other restrictions for, is that for gas, here it is for electric, so it kind of. All goes together, um, in terms of, of, uh. Time of day, but also seasonal.
So. They had. Time of day and seasonal restrictions for both. Gas powered and electric and, but for the electric, it was more permissive?
Yes, um, and some municipalities said. Okay, so these restrictions exist for gas powered, if you have electric, you're exempt, so you don't have those restrictions, so really all depended on what. Um, they were targeting, um, if, if they were targeting noise, then it applied to. Electric and gas, and gas had more, I'm sorry, electric had more leeway. Because both make noise.
Yeah.
Well, I would. Pause it that we, um. Our, um, final goal is to eliminate gas powered, right?
Yeah.
I think we already agreed on that last time, so any, um. Temporal or seasonal restrictions on gas powered would just be. Temporary, right?
Hmm.
In those years before they are totally.
Right.
Yeah, right, I just wanted to.
Yeah, sure.
It's interesting that some of these places have license requirement to operate gas powered. That's just. Want to recommend that.
Imagine administering that.
Yeah.
Yeah, separate department. Um, well. So. Ash is all yours, so what we. Maybe a framework for our ordinance.
So.
Any, anything that we can, any points of agreement that we have. Maybe we can just focus on leaf blowers. Initially.
So the spring use of leaf blowers. Is that, what, what's the reasoning for that? Or, or? Did I misinterpret when you, you were summarizing some other cities?
Right, so other cities permit, permitted those uses in springtime as well.
Some trees drop their leaves in spring. Uh, white oaks, there's some others, I was, not going out and do the campaign down in them. The stands, I know there was, there's some complaints, complaints about like the city's free leafing program to transition to in the fall. Uh, collection, you know, uh, free collection. Uh, didn't line up with the timeline for their, when they're being spelled, it was a different kind of tree, it wasn't, it wasn't. Um, and, and yeah, there's maybe some issues, it's like, leaves are down, you can get them in the snows and, you know, like, as, as you're coming out of that. Um. I'm, I'm, things that I, or that I agree with, like, uh. I think identifying the, the. Handful of pieces of, or types of equipment that we want to regulate explicitly, right, maybe there's four or five of those. Um, I, I'd honestly be more in favor of, of, of a complete framework than just blowers, the blowers could be.
Me too.
To be more, like, have more attention or. Yeah, but I think like an ordinance we pass ideally would include all the types of equipment we'd like to regulate.
Yep.
If we feel like there is a reasonable timeline to transition and, um. You know, the costs are helpful in terms of like, yeah, some, most of these things are not major capital expenditures. And any business should be able to reasonably plan this into a three or five year cycle, you know, like, it's not crazy. Um, and especially if we then like have direct staff to help identify rebates and trade in options to. Minimize, you know, financial impact for residents, also like first enforcement. Uh, step is a, a warning, educational resources and or offer for a trade in, you know, um, like that's a, a good. Mechanism, so like, I think, I think the equipment based approach. I think space out timeline. It'll be different years for probably different types of equipment.
Hmm.
So what would you add to the list of equipment?
We have, we have, blowers. Uh, blowers, spring trimmers, hedge trimmers, mowers, I'm, I'm not sure, I, I want to double check with what else, uh.
Chainsaw?
Uh, probably not chainsaws, probably not backup generators, um, probably not other specialty equipment at this point, power washers, I don't know. Um, I think, I think we're covering the major categories that just that Dave mentioned about the EPA, the percent of, of breakdown of. Like we're, we're trying to, we're not trying to fix everything, we're trying to fix the bulk of the problem, right?
Mowers, leaf blowers, chainsaws and trimmers make up like eighty percent. Snowblowers, six percent. Uh, you know, the rest is sort of encompassed in, you know, miscellaneous, which I assume is power washers or. I don't know.
Chainsaws may need to be. At maybe, maybe use an exemption for chainsaws, chainsaws are included, but knowing that there are applications for which. Uh, the current available, market available chainsaw products, lots of chainsaw products don't meet the need.
Um. Or we just add them in a few years.
Yeah.
Leave them out for now.
Right, and you, you, you could still include it in like. We could. You know, especially direct staff to review. You know, annually or every, or, you know, by annually or something like, um. These categories of equipment and when they're, when, when.
Yeah, any other two stroke engines.
So mowers, leaf blowers and trimmers make up about seventy percent.
Yeah.
So that would be huge.
What, what if folks feel like, this strategic question I asked, essentially of like getting. Uh, ideally at minimum, IU, MCCSE, and Bloomington on the same page with respect to the timeline, for all these, like. I feel like that's pretty critical, um. And it might not be easy, honestly. Um, to, to get to the timelines we're talking about, but I think that's. Uh, a kind of key piece that we need to, ideally have in hand, uh, to advance legislation.
Hmm.
I agree. Did you include the county government?
I did, but I, I'd like to. I'll, I'll put, um, a management.
Okay.
Uh, so somebody needs to reach out to the county.
Well, maybe what we should do is come up with a framework and then propose to them, here's what we have in mind.
And some suggested timelines, I think you can make that on paper and saying, hey, here's what we kind of think is reasonable based on. That for replacement costs, life cycle of equipment. Uh, offense of the. Uh, offense of the, you know, offensiveness of the equipment, um, and. It's, it's, it's not final, it's something to react to and it's something to start and have a conversation around, it's a little more specific, right, than, than what we have right now.
Um, so I have a modest proposal, just regarding gas-powered, powered leaf blowers. A phase-out period of two years. Uh, restricting use, uh, weekly. Nine to five, Monday through Friday, ten to four on Saturday and, and none at all on Sunday. And then, um. Instead of space up here to here, and then there's the seasonal. Matt, you were, was in, um. Uh, what was it, October, November, something like that?
Yeah, something like fall use, I mean, maybe we're trying to include some period of spring use as well, I don't know.
Okay.
And when, are you, you're saying that. The time restricted uses would be immediately and a full ban, or phase out to a full ban would be a two-year time?
Yeah. You think that's too ambitious?
I mean, there's. I think it might be too ambitious to get it ironed, but I, you know, I'm putting it out there and get some reactions and start a conversation. I also worry a little bit about a, a full day in the week of no, no use, um. Just, you know, a weekend, you're busy Saturday, or Saturday's raining.
Rains all day, so.
Yeah, you know, so like.
Allowance of a few hours, like one to four, noon to four or something on Sunday. I think that's what Evans said, right?
And would this be all, um, th- these restrictions would be specific to gas-powered blowers, not to mowers?
Yeah. Yeah, and, and you could go ahead and use your electric. Mm-hmm. Regardless.
Yeah.
Cause we want to incentivize, incentivize using your electric.
Right.
And this incentivizes the gas power.
So, um. Are we thinking like in March first to April fifteenth and September fifteenth to November fifteenth, something like that?
Probably past November fifteen. But, I, I don't know, yeah.
So November thirtieth?
Maybe, um. Maybe staff can help inform or maybe do some research into any of that timelines of.
We should talk to somebody in person, right?
Yeah.
I wonder if they're, they're doing it.
Yeah.
Stuff because. Um. We have, I'll talk to somebody in the staff.
Tim Street, that had a. Uh, I don't know what division, but one of the divisions, uh, and he's going to manage all this.
Yeah.
Uh. Related, uh, on the city side, I know like it's another complicated factor is that we contract for most of the. Brown's work, we, we do like. Twenty, thirty percent of ourselves or something, it's actually got a lot of companies we bring in.
Wow.
Um.
I didn't like that.
I didn't either.
Yeah, it came up in one of my past meetings, I think, or, it's not somewhere, I couldn't say that. Um. Just something to be aware of. But yeah, I think, uh, weekly time-based restrictions for blowers and seasonal restrictions for blowers are a reasonable part of this sort of. Uh, incentivization on the way to ban, um. Uh, so enforcement, kind of let's deal about that first step warning. You know, possible to, uh, offer of educational resources or trade-in, offer incentives there, and then I guess starting with the second. Maybe a fine, low, low fine, if, if, basically, I suppose.
Yeah.
You said at first offense would, the city would issue a warning and provide information about.
Educational resources and any financial incentives for switching, and I think the ordinance would probably need to like direct staff to. Uh, explore and develop some sort of program, not just educate, but to provide, uh. Uh, targeted financial assistance for transition, uh, for community members and or. Small businesses, right, like, and so that doesn't necessarily need to be city resources, I am. You know, again, thinking about heat energy here, um, or other rebates or resources that may be available, heck, could be like IDM grants for a climate. Like Sean tonight was attending a climate pollution direction, uh, grants listening session for my, you know, so there, there might be opportunities here, um. To leverage external funds, uh. But, but, but all that, I mean, we kind of need to call for this development, I think, in, in the ordinance, but it's, it's gonna, uh, largely. Go beyond the scope of what's in co and or within our ability to develop. We, I think it's an important component of, of a, you know, transition scheme.
So, um, going back to the, the phase out of equipment, um. It seems to me that we could use the same phase out for trimmers, two years.
I agree, I was just gonna bring it over.
Yeah.
It seems like the same battery pack, it's even.
And then we could restrict the use the same. The same days, times and days, now. Trimmers can, are needed here around, so I wouldn't see them, wouldn't work very well for trimmers.
Yeah, I agree with that.
You're also much less, if that's it.
Yeah.
Some noise and.
So I had, um. Weekdays nine to five, Saturdays ten to four, Sundays twelve to four?
Yeah. Um, there would essentially be. Uh, Evanston, I think is ten to four, or nine to four on Saturday, but. But, ten, ten to four would be. Be a little quieter in the morning. Um. I mean, the question is, I mean, trimmers don't use, I mean, don't emit a lot of noise, so is it really necessary to. Restrict them on Sundays?
I kind of think we, we leave the, the time-based restrictions to gas blowers only.
Okay.
I think that'll also make it more valuable.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. What do you think?
I'm trying to remember how loud.
I mean, they're. They're seemingly audible, but I mean, a leaf blower is really.
It's the kind of thing you overwhelm, you, you press when you're using it, you know, not, yeah. Well, maybe they are running, are they running constantly, or I forget, I've used gas-powered trimmer long on that. But.
I don't know, the ours are all.
They've got an audio.
Yeah, right, right.
Chugging along and then you pull the trigger. And makes a lot of noise.
So obviously I don't know how loud they are, if you think that they are not loud enough to warrant for time restriction.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're not, they're not as annoying, you hear a lot of complaints about leaf blowers, but I don't hear anybody complain about trimmers.
Mm-hmm.
So I think the time restriction is. Again, I don't want to overreach, I think that the idea is that, you know, this is. Reasonable, like, and people see, yeah, a liquor. Or we're free from leaf blowers on Sunday, um, for most of the day.
So no time restrictions at all for trimmers or just nine to five every day?
Yeah, maybe nine to five every day, I mean, it's.
Nah, I, I don't know, I mean.
There's no reason for it.
I wouldn't say, I, I just.
Let it go.
It's like, just thinking of like, people coming home from work and doing some hard work or whatever, like. We're gonna face up the equipment in two years, four years, or whatever, like, it's gotta be soon enough, I don't know, like. To me, gas-powered blowers is where it feels most justified and useful.
Alright. Okay, you have that, Ash?
So, yes, phase-up period of two years for gas-powered blowers, gas-powered trimmers, but we. Nine to five, Monday through Friday, twenty-four Saturday, twelve to four Sunday, and seasonal limits are four, maybe for gas-powered blowers.
Yeah.
Um, you're not mentioning mowers.
Right, we're going to mowers now, so mowers seem to need like maybe a five-year window or something like that.
Yeah, I'll figure out. Yeah, yeah, so, you know. I think I agree, I think we're looking at probably a five-year and a month and, and or, you know, we're, we're gonna be over the next. After six months or more, we get this finalized, right, and through, and so it may be implemented by fall of twenty twenty-four, so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Twenty thirty seems like a sort of like reasonable target, in some sense, we can start. Sooner than that, if we wanna start there and.
I can negotiate from there.
Yeah. Hey, huh?
It's gonna take a little while.
Yeah, um, but yeah, again, like, I mean, the, the, those. Cost estimates are useful, maybe, maybe there are things we don't know about that are missing, but like. We're not talking about massive sums of capital, like, it's just like, uh, uh, again, appropriate to the scale of the business, like. This should be within the realm of, of, a planable, you know, transition.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm curious to hear, yeah, feedback and what, what the, and there are operational, you know, concerns and pushback as well about. Needing spare batteries and all the rest, but, um.
Seems to.
Yeah.
Do we have, uh, any concerns about restrictions in the interim? Have there been complaints about where the noise, mowers? I mean, I think they're annoying.
Oh, we're talking about mowers.
Yeah, we're talking about mowers, yeah.
Yeah, um. Is it reasonable to set times on mowers now?
I don't know, I don't know if I've ever heard an electric mower. Uh, so, are they significantly less?
Yeah, they're, they're lower volume for sure than, uh. Than gas-powered, um.
I don't know.
Again.
Sunday mornings.
Yeah, we, we'll probably get too much pushback. Time restrictions, you think?
Yeah, I know, like, it's, it's inviting a lot more. Um. Yeah, a lot more of this stuff.
For micromanaging.
Yeah, I, I think also because almost everybody has mower. Whereas, a lot of people don't have trimmers or leaf blowers.
Yeah.
So it would affect a lot more people, then they, they do it when they fit it in, so.
Okay, so we'll just leave, leave off any time restrictions now.
No, in our entire season.
No. That seems entirely reasonable. Unfortunately, California is leading the way, or is it driving the industry to, to electric, so.
Yeah, above string. Much better than what we're trying to do.
Mm-hmm.
But.
Yeah, mowers, the, I'm getting a seasonal extension, my, the issues of, I know that there's the, uh, ordinance, it says no. Woods or grass over a certain number of inches.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but.
Um.
Unless you register your yard as a local.
And she, are we getting to a point, Ash, where you and, and other staff could put together a draft from, possibly for us to provide feedback on before we start. Expanding the. You know, the universe to city staff and eventually.
Yeah, I think the bigger questions were, did you need more information or research about any of these things? It sounds like, uh, the information that was provided has been helpful, um. You know, what, what was the big thing you wanted to focus on, was it noise, was it emissions, it sounds like it's emissions with. Noise being a side issue or an additional issue?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would not wanna put this under the noise ordinance, cause the, the main point to me is.
Right, it doesn't need to, it just, you know, it seems to me that, it, yeah, it's an, it's an ancillary issue, but it's important. But it would, it's about emissions, reducing emissions.
I agree.
And it serves the noise problem.
And the local, I mean, when you say emissions, yeah, not just greenhouse gas emissions, but, uh, other air pollutants, right, and I guess. Wh- where are we with respect to our lane, from a home rule perspective, and, and, um.
That was.
Like, I, I assume that we may run into challenges in respect to like regulating air quality locally. But, but we're not smoking, I mean, that's public health, and this is public health, this is.
Yeah.
Noise pollution, it is also local air pollutants, every single one of these pieces of what we're talking about has. Knox and particulate matter and everything else, and it's some more dust, and, and so it's absolutely like a, a public health issue, and yeah. Smoking ban's where our mind goes, but.
Right.
Yeah, this is a pretty important question and a thing to get right, so.
Yeah, I think a lot, I don't know if there are any other, um, to my knowledge, I don't think there are any other. Outright bans that have been instituted in Indiana for gas-powered lawn and garden equipment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think most of these, uh, other municipalities have seen more successes in, uh, putting them in with. Nuisance and noise, um, because, and I, and I don't think there have been issues with. Reaction currently, but that doesn't mean that, that for me, an issue in the future, if we, if, if the city were to propose something. And then, uh, the legislature goes, oh no, um, so I think, um.
Where did the smoking ban go, could that was a city?
Yes, no, even on that. Oh, probably Title VI, I believe. So it, it could be something that goes in Title VI.
I mean, that makes more sense to me than, I mean, the noise restriction, the time of use restriction, even though it's like the same subject, probably shouldn't go in the noise. Like nuisance, noise regulation, but yeah, once it helps in sanitation, that's exactly what this is.
Uh.
Um, so yeah, Title VI. Uh, it seems to me like it's own chapter in Title VI. Um, just like smoking in public places and places of employment is a section of City Code, I don't know. I assume this is just like. Generally, like, like. The home rule is it operates in, in Indiana is essentially that we have the right to regulate something unless the state has said otherwise, right? It's not a, there's no field retraction concept in like. State application of home rule. I don't know, but, but this, this was very analogous to me to, to the, the justification and motivation of a smoking ban. You were talking about regulating outdoor health impacts of an outdoor air pollutant in the patterns of smoking, that's what it is. And so here we're talking about regulating health impacts of. An outdoor air pollutant. This, this is my, I mean, absolutely go back and talk to Steven and or City Evil, you know, figure out what you all think is best in terms of the approach, but it strikes me that Title VI. Probably the logical place for the, the ban, uh.
And I think that makes more sense than, uh, just saying emissions and trying to regulate. That outside of focusing on avoiding health impacts of that or air pollution.
Yeah.
I will, I will do some digging and make sure, um. But, yeah, I think, uh, that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, I think we should put together a memo, just throwing down the rationale. Um. And that's, I think it should be framed in public health, I guess, Matt, is what you think. But it also speaks to nuisance and noise as well, and also speaks to CO2 emissions. Which we committed to, um. So we wanted to, you know, attend to each one of those, um. Makes the case essentially, you know, why, why we.
I mean, we can borrow from other ordinances that are in the packet, like the Princeton one talks about. Protection of landscaping workers.
Yeah, it is absolutely a, a worker health and safety issue.
Yeah.
Right, so if you needed us to contact, um, I believe that was the Princeton, New Jersey, their sustainable Princeton, uh, five oh one C three. That did a lot of work on that ordinance for them.
So.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Should, should we each come up with the points that we want to be addressed in the memo?
What's the memo's purpose, is it?
Just to, you know, just sort of one pager that we can hand to people to say, here's what we're doing. Here's the rationale, here's, you know, here's what the council motivated.
Sure.
To regulate these things because of public health, worker safety, health, because of emissions, because of affecting. Afflicting public wear, breathing difficulties, et cetera, because.
Are we gonna talk about noise?
Nuisance and noise, yeah, sure, I mean, it's all part of it.
That can, yeah, be considered public health as well.
But ultimately, I think that Matt's right, I mean, since to me, thinking isn't where you are, you're thinking where. In terms of home rule, was that appropriate, and, uh, it's primarily, I guess. Public health.
So we're analogous, places where we very clearly have succeeded in regulating, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, noise seems like an area we very, like, if, if I, if I'm. Stay trying to, you know, trying to override this in some way, it's hard, if we, if it's for noise pollution specifically, it's hard for them to. I don't know, maybe it's not that hard to target just this without. Calling into question any municipal's, you know, noise regulations, which are extent Barbie Apple, they can, you know, lots of municipalities have that. And similarly with. And then similarly with um. You know, air, local air pollutants and their effect on public health. We have lots of other regulations and I imagine lots of other municipalities do too. That are already regulated and seem as legitimate, you know, so it's hard to. Uh it's hard for them to have a rationale, essentially a sound rationale for. Not this type of air pollutant, but this one's okay um. Not that they need sound rationale, but maybe it goes accordingly, you know.
So is it your impression, I mean, we we in terms of home rule, we're the, we're one of the more flexible states? Unless it's prohibited explicitly, right? Because buildings are rolling, this applies in other.
Right.
States where it's, uh you know, we we you can't do anything, it's, you know.
It's a it's a lot of. Yeah.
But here it's it's not specified, we can.
We're flexible, yes, except for that, like, our our state can be like preemptive happy um.
Mm hmm.
You know, issues that Bloomington cares about a lot. So so yes, I think with the more open, like, in the long term, it's. There's a lot of reaction.
Yeah, yeah.
There is a, especially when I come to you, I think Matt was saying. Noise is something that cities are able to regulate um smoking, some things are clearly able to regulate. Uh so if it's housed in something that that cities clearly have had a warning to regulate, it's less likely to. I I don't say it's less likely to be preempted, but it it's going to be harder for uh. The state legislature to come in and say, wow, you want to get rid of, you know, um an entire business um under the perky book. It's, you know, all the emissions um whereas, you know, if you target something specifically um. It and have it be more specific and direct as to what exactly you're targeting um and how and uh I think it would be more doable.
Mm hmm, yeah. Right.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be pretty clearly that don't have. I like, I don't think we have the authority or ability to like. Regulate or restrict greenhouse gas emissions. Like, that's not what we do. We we. We do other things that might, and that might be one component, right? Like, we are interested in incentivizing building electrician, for instance, through. Development code uh for reasons. And and again, it goes back, a lot of that goes back to, well, first of all, it's incentive, not mandate, but second, it's. There are, it's also tied back to local health effects, health impacts and and indoor air quality, things like that, right? Um so yeah, I just think like. While the climate. Goals and uh greenhouse gas emissions protection targets are part of our overall motivation, they're not the legal basis.
Yeah.
For our um. Regulation, but we do have, we have sound legal basis for our regulations. So that's what we should sort of look lean into in terms of the.
Mm hmm.
Structure and.
Okay.
So in our um. One page explanation. Should we talk about greenhouse gas emissions or really focus on? Particular matter and other?
Well, you're just saying we should probably leave with.
Yeah, I think so.
Also. You know, note that, you know. We have a goal of reducing emissions. And we also are tending to noise and nuisance. Which I guess isn't tough particularly, but it could affect students and help things.
I have a noise.
How are you?
Excited, I know. Sorry.
Excited evening, not a guest, right?
Well, for you. We're we're kind of late back here.
Um. I I I I agree that like a one page or something like that will be useful ultimately uh communications tool. I don't feel like it's the most pressing uh.
Okay.
Component of what we're to do. I'm happy for it to be developed into our like, you know, a draft. To be begun, but I feel like I'm getting a framework out of our ordinance, getting our feedback on it and then circulating it with some of the key partners we've identified.
Yep.
Starting to get their feedback and then ultimately buying is like the the near term package.
I'm just thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm I'm sure, you know, uh Dave Askins will be asking, you know, you know, what's your motivation? Be nice to say, uh here, read this.
When it comes to the framework of the ordinance, uh. Who else would you want us to work with? I know you can get in touch with people from Legal USD, um circulate them on them to see what their feedback is.
I would prefer maybe just a circulation with this committee first.
Yeah.
For initial feedback.
Yeah.
And then we can do that.
Yeah.
Do we have members of the public on Zoom?
Um. One, do we want to?
I'd like to reserve some time for public.
Yeah, it's already eight.
Janus. Are we, so we're done? We've got instruction.
I feel like we're. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, wonderful. Welcome. Would you like to say anything?
Sure.
Um introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Joseph Wynnia, um generally active in the sustainability world, particularly in City Bloomington. Um to have been observing this process intermittently over the last number of months that it's been unfolding. Glad to see it progressing um and having an ordinance being drafted. Appreciate the work on trying to achieve this transition. I know it's a lot of work, so it's it's good to see the process in that. There's interest and partnership and and yeah, just want to say that I appreciate the process. Thank you.
Can you spell your last name?
It's W Y N I A.
Well, thanks for coming, participating and paying paying attention.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. So what who do we have? We can send an invitation if you would like to speak.
Yeah, if you'd like to speak, you can raise your hand using the raise hand feature, um the reactions tab or the more tab.
Not put your hands up.
Hands not raised.
Okay. Yeah, all right, well. Shall we, shall we adjourn? Well, let's talk about next meeting um certainly. We've been doing this monthly.
Would be helpful to break it on, ideally back into the next.
Yeah.
Meeting.
Oh, and I forgot to say, um at our last meeting, uh I was requested to check with the Solid Waste Management District. On. Possible influx of batteries if.
Mm hmm.
When this uh. If and when such legislation um would go through and um. Let me just read you what Tom Glass has said. So. He said the short answer is we could handle the batteries, but depending on the types of batteries, it would probably result in an increased cost to the district. Most electrical yard equipment I'm familiar with either plugs in or has rechargeable batteries, so I'm not sure how much of an increase we would see initially in the batteries. However, the rechargeable batteries do eventually need to be replaced and those tend to be the types that are more expensive for us to manage. The other other side of that equation is making sure that the gas powered equipment being replaced is properly managed. And these are things the district also accepts. The equipment itself would be no problem as most of it would go to scrap metal. Um any oil and gas we can also manage and there is a cost to properly dispose of the gas. Used oil can be recycled and depending on the petroleum market at the time could result in revenue for the district or an add cost, so.
Good enough.
Okay.
These are all.
Sounds terrible.
You know, depending on the market and.
The transition is going either way. We might sell it in a bit, but yeah.
I think it would be gradual enough.
Yeah. It seems like it. And if there are increased costs, I would just, again, something that's gonna happen uh one way or another, so. Except for the the district may need to address it.
Sorry, Dave, you were talking about next meeting.
No, no, I I I. No, that was really good, you know, thanks for explaining, just, I just didn't know, I mean, are they gonna be able to cope with. Looking at her and. Okay, uh first week in November, you think, on Tuesday? Are people available?
Election Day, uh seven, I'm actually out that first week as well personally.
Okay.
Um and there might be election day things.
Like out of town?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so maybe the following.
Maybe the following week. The Tuesday generally works for me. I will note that BPOS does meet on the second Tuesday from six to seven thirty.
Oh.
So I stepped out of it earlier from this meeting and normally Sean would be at that as well.
So we can make it a little later.
Hundred and seven thirty on fourteen would be reasonable, folks.
Just um. Is that's fourteen?
Yeah, Tuesday the fourteen.
Seven thirty.
And it's been on powder if that's.
What was your schedule?
That would work.
Is that okay?
Okay.
We don't have other options, dude.
Then we can reach out to Sean and we surely.
If we did it on the thirteenth, we could maybe meet earlier. I don't know if Mondays work for people, but.
Okay. We can leave that open as, because we don't have.
I hate to have staff stay so.
Hmm, yeah. Sure. Yeah, I mean. I'm flexible. My Mondays are generally, my Monday evenings are generally open.
So the thirteenth or fourteenth.
We could do a a short due to poll with Sean, if you want to do as well.
Yeah.
It's good reference.
Why don't we try a due to poll, but maybe. You know. Suggest those dates was.
If you're worried about me, don't worry about me. I can. We can box the ball.
Okay. Thanks, Ash.
Yeah, of course.
Thanks for all your help and everything. Um. So that's great. We got something a little bit now. See it in writing and.
Yeah.
And then uh consider a little bit more and. Just send it out.
I can send out a quick poll for the dates that week, the thirteen, three or seventeen.
Okay.
Actually, the seventeen, Stephen and I are doing the C L D that whole thing, so.
Okay.
Um thirteen or sixteen.
So that's.
Sixteenth, we have special committee on health processes.
Okay, so I'm not fifteen, this is that's easy, so yeah, thirteen.
We're doing it down.
Some curtain cats.
Yeah.
Indeed.
All right, we are adjourned. Great.
Okay, thanks.